Yes, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the prayer and then followed by the pledge of allegiance and roll call. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony. We pray for strength for the family and friends of Norm Terrill, a retired firefighter. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Baker?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Here.
Hedley?
Here.
Barth?
Here.
Okay, you should have had a chance to read the council minutes from the May 15 meeting.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep. Thank you. It's nice to see so many people here today. I would like to ask some special guests to come forward tonight. Matthew Wiley, Brandon Miller, Ethan Wilhelm, and Alex Posth. Would you come up here, please? We would like to recognize them for the honor of obtaining their Eagle Scout status. So you just want to face the crowd here so they can all see your smiling faces. We are going to present them with a letter that says, "Congratulations on your success earning the rank of Eagle Scout. This is an admirable accomplishment. We applaud your commitment to achieve this goal. You have demonstrated the highest qualities of leadership and moral character in your pursuit and attainment of the Eagle Scout rank. We have no doubt that this honor will provide you a very advantageous beginning in your future pursuits. We wish you every success." And they are signed by all of the village council members. So, thank you very much. (applause)
I just wanted to let everybody here know that on June 21st at 11:30 a.m., commissioners will be having commissioners on the road. We're going to have a lunch and we're going to do it out to the new clubhouse that opened up today. And we're inviting all the council members, we're inviting the trustees, and we're inviting the general public. We've done this a number of times and it seems to be real good. We can talk to the people who have voted for us or the people who didn't, and the people who have complained, and we've learned that it's easier to take the complaints around food.[274.52][274.52](laughter) Anyway, I just wanted to invite you to look there up at the clubhouse on the 21st of June at 11:30 a.m.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mick.
No, no, the commissioners are not buying.[290.33][290.33](laughter)
Going on then, we'll go to boards and commissions. The...oh, am I jumping? Well, I guess I did. You all have an approved bills list in your packet. Does anyone have questions about that bills list?
Oh, yeah.
Roll call for approving the bills, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Same.
I feel so unorganized. Ron just pointed out to me that you have minutes in your packet from a special council meeting on May 22. That needs approved also.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Need to get a grip on my papers. I think it was that extra stuff that came in on my desk this morning that did all this. Okay, everybody keep me in line. Are we now on the boards and commissions? Okay. Well, in your packet you had minutes from the May 17 Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, and they met to discuss a variance request, oh, a variance for a setback. And then, put on my table, I think, just today, there's minutes from a June 1 meeting that was held to discuss the application of a lot split for the rear lot on East High Street. So, anybody have any questions? We will go on to council committee reports. Do we have any committees that want to give any reports?
I don't have a report, but Water Sanitaria is meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 here in the council room.
That's a water sewer?
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor, the police fireman at 5:17. Minutes are in the packets, and I would, whenever you deem the time, I would like to have a session.
Okay, we'll just do it at the end of the meeting, I guess?
That'd be fine, Mayor.
Like normal? Our...Mike, is your committee going to go over the bids that were turned in for the refuge? Is that the purpose of your meeting mainly?
That's one of the meetings. Yeah, one on the agenda.
Yeah.
We've got two proposals. We have not met in regards to, Kent sent them out. I don't know if the other committee people had read them or not, but they had two proposals. We were going to address that then.
Okay, is that pretty much the sole purpose of your meeting?
And any other loose ends, tie-ups with the current projects going on in town.
Okay.
Outlaw Don had any things to bring to the meeting, but that was the main purpose.
Oh, like requests or adjustments or something? Okay.
Yep.
All righty. And, any other committees have anything to report? Okay. You have the administrator's report in your packet. Since he's not here, I will just read it. The first item is another plea to residents in the northeastern portion of town to stop flushing items, especially rags, which don't belong in the sewer. The guys are still pulling the pumps at Defiance Avenue Lift Station every time we get any kind of rain. The second paragraph, "I'm still waiting for the Ohio EPA rep to get back with me about meeting to discuss flow metering in our projects in general. I have left a phone message and email messages since the previous council meeting." The legislation for tonight involves a 5-700, involves the 5 to 700 block of East Cornelia Storm and Sanitary Sew Project. This is our WPCLF, Principal Forgiveness Job, and the fellow in Columbus wants to sign legislation by June 6th, thus the need for it being passed as an emergency. And the final paragraph reads, "The water and street departments were out from 6:00 p.m. on May 30th until 3:00 a.m. on May 31st for a main break on South Maple Street. Street guys still ran Wednesday trash route as usual and did a good-sized sewer dig on Spencerville Street on June 1st."
That second paragraph really bothers me that they haven't come back to me. Anything we want to add is still happening?
Not at all.
No?
No, because we asked for a meeting. We were going to go up there.
If we weren't right on, they'd be after us, so I...
I think there was an email today from Kent, and Andy gave him a couple of dates in there, so...but he did get back with them. We've just got to get back to the date. That's good for us.
Okay.
But they did respond?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jeff, is there anything else that you'd like to make council aware of going on in any of the projects?
Everything's moving right along? Water is going good. They should have Dix Street shut down tomorrow for the next couple of days doing that connection. So Hicks and Bryan should be closed for a couple of days.
Hicks and Bryan will be closed for a couple of days?
Yes.
Okay. Both directions? I mean...
Yeah, because they got to, they'll have that whole intersection laid wide open.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we are on to the solicitor's report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2017-14. First reading by caption only, "An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency."
We suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance number 2017-14 by caption only, "An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency."
I would make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Third reading of resolution 2017-08, "Resolution strongly opposing the state of Ohio which proposes centralized collection of net profit tax returns and other provisions related to the municipal income tax, which will cause a substantial loss of revenue needed to support the health, safety, welfare, and economic development efforts of Ohio municipalities."
We're going to have to suspend.
And that's final reading?
I'll second.
We didn't do it as an emergency for the last three.
I'll second. It's approvable, I guess.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Next is resolution 2017-09, "First reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency." We can do this. We talked about this with Scott. There's still some discussions going on. We could pass that at our next meeting. The contracts don't expire until the end of the month, so we can make sure everything gets ironed out first and then pass it at our next meeting so that the contracts can be signed before July 1st. That's true of all the, that our contracts are all on the same date. So, resolution 2017-10, "First reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Mark Township and declaring an emergency." And resolution 2017-11, "First reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Milford Township and declaring an emergency." Next is resolution 2017-12, "A resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Z Construction Company, Inc. for the East Cornelia Street Sewer Separation Division A Sanitary and Storm Sewer Project and declaring an emergency." That's what Kent was talking about in his report that needs passed.
We had a waterman put in two years ago, I think, by a company out Main Street. I mentioned a few things about the company. Everybody voted to employ him anyhow. We had problems with the sewer, certainly, and all. I know.
Jones and Henry recommended them.
I don't care.
No, I'm just curious. I just...and so, the second contract's just lining? Yeah, that's why I asked Kent why they were done it, too. The first one's an actual replacement, and the other one's just lining the existing sewer, and evidently only general contractors don't handle that. Only the specific ones that do the lining do it. That's why there's a need for two contracts, two separate bids and everything.
You don't have to take their bid.
You don't have to take their bid.
No, you have to determine what's the lowest and best and...
Well, if you read your, if you read your letters from Jones and Henry, they, they should have automatically been thrown out when they, when they forgot the 6,500.
Except they said they'd honor it for that amount with not including the 6,500.
I don't care. If you bid a project and you don't do the bidding 100% the way it's supposed to be written down, it gets thrown out. I'm just saying.
What's the timeline? Does it have to be done because of... June whatever, June 6th.
These are, these are the projects that seem, if this did not go through committee, this is one of the projects that we're working on. And not, you know, getting onto the bus or anything, but, you know, he checked with these guys. I mean, did he, I don't, Jeff, did you have any dealings with, helping with this project?
They just had the bid, I mean, the only thing I knew, they had the question that they had the bid opening, but that's all I know.
But you've heard things about it?
I would trust that Kent did his homework. I mean, I don't think Kent would let a, bring a company to council that he didn't have faith in.
What was cash services, how did it?
Was it a matter that of the, end of the project?
I'm here to argue with the mayor. I just made a statement. You do with it what you want.
Well, I'm waiting for someone to do that. I mean...
I'll make a motion to accept the Z Construction.
We'll guys suspend the rules. For free.
You guys suspend the rules, too?
It's an emergency. We're reading because it has an emergency because we got something by June 6th. Yeah, by tomorrow.
I'll second that.
Do you guys remember anything that happened out on that water line? How they run sewers and everything?
They never sued us. This is a different company.
No, because we give them $14,000.
When was it, Ron?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
It's a different company. It's just that I knew that company, and I kind of warned you. I know another company, and I'm kind of warning you.
But we...
If nobody listens to me, you do whatever you want.
But we got a new engineering firm, so...
An engineering firm is not responsible for anything, nothing.
But then again, don't you think we got to go on Kent's lead if he thinks they're fine?
I can talk to him. He knows fine. You do whatever you want. Vote. Just get her done.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Second, third readings of resolution 2017-11 by caption only, sorry, I picked the wrong one up.
2017-12 by second reading by caption only, "A resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Z Construction Company, Inc. for the East Cornelia Street Sewer Separation Division A Sanitary and Storm Sewer Project and declaring an emergency."
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Then resolution 2017-13, "First reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Lane Inliner LLC for the East Cornelia Street Sewer Separation Division B Cured and Placed Sewer Project and Declaring an Emergency."
I'll make motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution 2017-13 by caption only, "A resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Lane Inliner LLC for the East Cornelia Street Sewer Separation Division B Cured and Placed Sewer Project and Declaring an Emergency."
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep. Thank you. We'll go on to the department heads. Police Chief Kirk Stikney, please.
Hello. I was asked before about whether or not I had any plans to fill the positions of sergeant and/or lieutenant. I do have plans to fill the sergeant's position. I went to the police fire EMS committee and recommended Monica Herman to get their approval. They were approval of that, and said that I just needed to bring it to council now and the mayor. So I would like to, I don't know if to call it a nomination, or put forth Monica Herman as being promoted to the position of sergeant. She's been with the Hicksville Police Department for just over a year. She has nearly 15 years in police, in law enforcement, and she's really been doing a great job with what she's been doing.
Yeah, it's always a pleasure to run into Monica and have a conversation with her. I see she's been employed with the village since September 2015. I would recommend that we promote Monica.
I would take the mayor's recommendation, put it in a form of a motion to be promoted to sergeant.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Any other news for us, chief?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Do you have any questions for me? Anybody? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to Fire Chief Scott Kramer.
And chief, thanks for all the support on Memorial Day. Your officers, they did a great job.
All I have is just to give you an update. We have a company coming in on Wednesday and Thursday, going to service both of our pumpers. The 503, the Pierce, needs some valve work done. They're going to go through it and see what all we need to do to, to see if we can increase the pump capacity. It's holding where it's supposed to for now, but it's getting weak, and they're going to service the other truck and do pump testing on both.
So 503's leaking quite a bit of water out.
That's what they're going to fix.[1378.12][1378.12](laughter) It's been leaking for a while. We've been kind of putting it off, and we just finally, we're going to have to do it, so...
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Scott?
No.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you also for the parade and the support.
We're sorry at the loss of one of your firemen.
Scott, believe you have time to stick around.
Yes.
Okay, EMS Chief Lonnie Kessler. Nothing to report. Does anybody have any questions for Lonnie? All righty. Do we have a park director here anywhere in the house? All right, I don't see one.
That was the first day pool opening, I think. Was it?
Yeah, I was there before it opened. The water was 70 degrees. It was too early for it to open, but it looked very refreshing.
My kids went, I think there were like 60 people at that point.
60? Really? Good. Wonderful.
So all the leaks are fixed, I'm guessing, or I read the water.
It appears so, yeah. So, I'm glad you could fill us in on that, Peter. Okay, we will go on to the fiscal officers' report. Cheryl?
I have the month-to-date, year-to-date cash report. The April media com franchise fee report just came in. The other ones are all from May. The income tax collections, revolving loans, the police department, the mayor's court are back-to-back. I put them on the same page.
And we have the rescue squad collection report. Thanks, Lonnie. Maybe you said that, Cheryl, but I didn't see it on the agenda.
I didn't. I put it under EMS.
All right.
Are you alarmed about the 15% down on income taxes? Is the timing...
Well, Kim explained it to me, that last year at this time, there was a, one of the big places paid twice by mistake.
Who?
So it threw her off on this month.
Darn.
She was until she remembered that, and she went back and looked it up, and they had paid twice through Ohio Gateway.
So just comparing from the month, a year ago?
Last year. Exactly.
But at the end of the year, still down 15%?
Yeah.
Excuse me, mayor, I do have a, about the park, the bathrooms. I called Feller and Finch today, talked to Don. He has not sent in a contract yet for us to take a look at. They had lost their architect, so they're looking for somebody else at the present time. They have applied for the Nature Works grants, and they also reapplied for the state grants. That's $50,000. They had to rewrite it. It's got to go through a different committee. When I talked to Senator Hite's office two months ago, they thought it was going to go through fine. They just needed the paperwork redone, changing it from the water park to the restroom concession stand combination. And that has not been sent in yet, as I found out today.
Oh, my gosh, because I was told that was, I was told that was going to be in the transportation bill.
Yep. I did, too, and I said, "How long is it going to take to both get the contract to us with the prints and plan?" And they said, "Either end of this week or first part of next," because it's been a while. And I said, "When are you going to have this contract then, or the proposal for the state grant?" And she said, "By the end of this week or first part of next." So that was an update on that. I was kind of surprised it was still being worked on. I know Kent was working on it. Val worked on it for a while, and Kent helped with finalizing the paperwork to resubmit, so...but I called him directly and found that out today.
I was kind of concerned that something was going to happen.
And I think it was, like you said, a Nature Works grant through the state, and now it's going through a capital improvements grant because of the change of structure for the money, everything for the restroom.
Because I was originally told it should be available, like by July 1st.
I thought so, too.
So that's...
So I might call...
Because we couldn't spend any money. I mean, I think we were limited on how much we could do prior to actually getting...
Because I didn't really, and it's a restroom, so, you know, there's some construction, everything, but to fix the parking lot and to build that building, I said, "You'd be coming into football season, and that's well-used down there with different people, and the park's using it, you know, for the adventure alley." I said, "Is that something they're still planning on getting done yet this year?" And he said, "Yes." But let me call Senator Hite's office tomorrow and see maybe where it's in the channel. Even though they might not have their correct paperwork, maybe they can give me an update on when it will be filed.
I appreciate you staying on top of that because I had a fear that we were going to...
I thought it was done, but...
Okay. And you also had put on your, in your, maybe on your table today, I'm not sure how you got it, but, "Water Supply and Treatment Report of Operations." I guess if you have any questions about this report, you should probably go to Jessie. I don't think she's here. Now, for my stack of papers that are a little bit... I wanted to give you an update on the CIC because a lot's been happening. Gary Hayes lost both office personnel. Jerry's been working really hard in Hicksville. I mean, as you can imagine, with all the stuff that's going on in Hicksville with the expansions and everything, he has spent a lot of time over here, and the training center's set up and that kind of stuff, but he is, he's in the office totally alone right now. The board is going to do some interviewing to try to hire a workforce development person eventually. They're asking contributors to step up and contribute more money so that they can get this workforce specialist that all the business and industry in town have said to me that they can't find workers, you know, and so this position, this person in this position should hopefully help with that. But I've contacted several companies in Hicksville between Friday and today and just told them that if there's anything that they need to contact us, because Jerry's a little shorthanded. Otherwise, he would be, you know, checking in on themselves. There's a few businesses in town that have some expansions planned, and so I know they'll be needing to get together with us and do some things, so just understand Jerry's short-staffed. And then, Two Bandits Uptown has approached me about wanting to set bistro tables and chairs out on the sidewalk, and he said that it's been all okayed by the Liquor Control Committee. But I've contacted several companies in Hicksville between Friday and today and just told them that if there's anything that they need to contact us because Jerry's a little shorthanded. Otherwise, he would be, you know, checking in on themselves. There's a few businesses in town that have some expansions planned and so I know they'll be needing to get together with us and do some things. So just understand Jerry's short-staffed. And then, Two Bandits Uptown has approached me about wanting to set bistro tables and chairs out on the sidewalk. And he said that it's been all okayed by the Liquor Control Commission. And there would be a designated area blocked off on the sidewalk that the tables and chairs and of course the alcohol would need to stay within that designated area. You know, he's thinking a fencing area that would be permanent during the summertime, taken down during the wintertime for snow removal and all that kind of stuff. I called the guy from Liquor Control Commission myself today just to make sure that, you know, I understood all the facts. And he said there is an application process and that the village would need to just send a letter of support to go along with the owner's application for this. And I think that they would like to, they being Two Bandits, would like to be able to place those bistro tables on the street right away. So I'm bringing it to you to see if anybody has any negative thoughts about it or positive thoughts.
There ain't enough room there, I don't think. And I really don't think it's a good idea.
He would intend to keep it directly under his awning, no further out, which he thought would be four feet.
They're still gonna have to serve over the fence. They can't get down through there if they put tables in there.
What, well, the, the, the tables and chairs would be in a fenced-in area outside the front door underneath the awning. That's, he said he wanted underneath the awning so that if it sprinkles or something, no one will get wet.
And it'll stay there all summer?
Summer only.
They won't take it down.
Right. And then he would remove it in the fall throughout the winter. The guy from the liquor commission did to me, you know, that he didn't, he didn't seem to think that there was, I mean, he, that the application needed to be in, but he sounded pretty okay with it.
I'm not in favor of it. I just, I don't like the idea of putting stuff like that on the sidewalk, especially having open alcohol containers. And then if you open up a can of worms and allow them to do it, what if the pharmacy wants to put wheelchairs out there for display or NAP wants to put out a couple toolboxes out there for display? I don't like it, open up that can of worms.
I see it in Fort Wayne. I see it in other towns I've been in.
Just the accessibility to going in to get drinks or having a waiter or waitress come out there serving yous.
Yeah.
Doesn't look real peaceful in that atmosphere compared to other ones.
You know, down there where I used to stay in the auction, with the auction company in the really elite shopping mall, every restaurant has it.
I see it a lot.
But they're 30 and 40-foot openings. Patio sidewalks, they're not 12-foot with the tree and a power pole and a...
People riding bicycles and everything else.
But they got room.
Not room up there. So they want halfway out?
Just four foot under their awning. Just under their awning.
Have a drink on the way. What do you think, Troy, as far as...
I mean, I think it's just a personal, I mean, personal choice. And I mean, the only thing would be, like you said, if the next person down the road decides they want to do it and whatever. I mean, I don't think there's any issue from, obviously if liquor control's satisfied, there's no issue from an alcohol standpoint. And it's, it's really a practicality situation or, you know...
Do we have an ordinance right now where people can't put stuff out there for display?
Off the top of my head, I don't think so.
It'd be like Bruce wouldn't put tables out.
Unless there were a sign. I mean, we have obviously a sign ordinance.
Well, like at the Eagles, you can't go outside and sit and drink a beer. So how can they up there?
The back patio area where you can't leave, you have to come back through the Eagles to leave. Yeah, you can't. It's all enclosed, six-foot fence.
They just got special rule, the liquor control, like you said, there's an application process. You gotta show them what you're gonna do. And it'll, it'll probably would have, when you say fence, it probably just has those little, you know, they got little posts in the corner.
I don't think it's gonna be very high, but...
Yeah, little leather, like between, not leather, whatever.
Just an iron type?
Yeah, something so that they can clearly mark it off and you can't leave that area with your drinks. I mean, people aren't, I'm sure people aren't gonna be walking up and down the sidewalk trying to...
How soon do they do it all over?
Yeah.
I don't think in a big, big hurry, yes or no.
Yeah, I mean, he wanted to do it as soon as possible, but you know, I...
I understand the concept by wanting to do it, you know, those kind of pubs and that's the end thing to do with these new things and...
Sit outside.
And you got after hours and people walk, you know, during the day when people are walking, if somebody fell into it or, you know, there's a liability.
I like the idea. I just don't think there's enough room there.
No. I agree. That's why I said what I said.
Pretty tight.
Well, I guess, I guess maybe...
Is that something that would go to committee?
You want to just have a vote?
I would just appreciate a vote so I can give him an answer.
I'll make a motion to not allow it.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Barth?
No.
Okay, you have voted not to allow bistro seating on the sidewalk in front of Two Bandits. Thank you for addressing that. I'll talk to him after the council meeting. So, I just wanted to tell you, some of you are concerned about the, the condition of the block building across from the green elevator. And the chief and I went and spoke to the property owner and he has intentions to block up the weak areas on the one corner to make it more secure. That's how that conversation went. And then I would like to thank the Haver Drive residents that evidently barbecued a great meal for the contractors that were working out on Haver Drive. I thought that was pretty nice. Sounds like they really enjoyed the meal. I'd like to thank Mary Wong. She did a wonderful job on the community-wide garage sales, brought a lot of people to town. I talked to a lot of vendors and people over at the old high school lot and they seemed to be enjoying themselves in Hicksville and enjoying the company. Troy and I talked about this a little bit. Someone brought it to my attention that perhaps we should consider an agreement with the Sherwood Mutual Telephone Company if they're gonna dig on all of our streets in town so that there's an understanding of who's gonna pay for any damage if anything's done, hit during their, their work. And so Troy, I will trust Troy to follow up on that. And I would like to remind everyone that there's free lunches and fun activities all summer long, ages 1 to 18, June 12 through August 10. They're closed July 3 and 4. The Hicksville Parks Rotary Pavilion, lunches served from 11:45 to 12:15. So all ages 1 to 18, lunch at the Hicksville Park, Monday through Friday. Darcy Sprague is in charge of that program. And then we also have a Dare Camp coming up, Third Annual Hicksville Dare 2017 Summer Camp, July 11, 12, and 13. It's 8:00 AM to 3:30, Hicksville High School for students going into 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th grades. There's a $20 registration fee, but I'm sure I would, I believe if, if that's not affordable to someone, that they might be able to get some help with that. But I've heard good things about the Dare Summer Camp in the past, so, and I, I know that in the past, they've been really happy with the turnout that they've had in Hicksville. So hopefully some kids will take advantage of that fun week. Is there anyone present in the audience today that would like to address council about